Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for being here today. We're going to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting to order one key. May 22, 2024. Respectfully acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the unceded traditional territory of this equipment. Recommendation that the Committee of the Whole Meeting agenda for May 22, 2024 be approved as circulated. Counselor Bailey, Counselor McCabe, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Recommendation that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on May 8, 2024 be adopted. Counselor Bushel, Counselor Rich. Oh, they haven't been here for a while, forgot her name. They were. Carrie, okay, we're going to go right to delegations. We have Todd Kylo, Repairing Areas Protection Regulation. Todd, the floor is yours. I have nothing to throw.
Thanks for seeing me again. Just wanted to give maybe a quick update. I don't want to take a whole bunch of time when you guys are busy, but I wanted to give you guys a bit of an update on just researching the Repairing Areas Regulation with what RAR to RAPR. And then maybe get some items of ways that we can look at maybe helping the permit process and maybe do the, I guess, the studies in moving forward with development. So maybe there's, I'll just hand out a got a brochure from the actual ministry. Which gives.
Thank you.
So just some more reading for you, which I know you guys know, like. All right, you all have to be educated.
Thank you.
Okay, you got one? So there's you two. I don't have.
Do you have one?
Yeah.
Oh, it literally is.
I have this. So in the first one is, is a, this is reinforced lands and natural resource brochure done by their repairing areas regulations here. And basically what it does is guidelines that took place from RAR to RAPR. In it, if you look on page two. Okay, so you can tell me where, where RAR is, what it was, a local government directive under the local government. Repairing Areas Protection Act, protect habitat according to the legislation. So it's, it's basically that. RAR is still the framework for the repairing areas. And RAPR is just recommendations, they changed it in 2019 to RAPR because of the recommendations from the ombudsman. So basically the same framework is still there. Go to page. The funding and requirements under RAR for local governments proponents and QEPs has not changed. It's still falling under that 2004 regulations. The assessment methodologies, simple and detailed reporting requirements, notifications and review standards have not changed. And the features functions and conditions that contribute to the fishing of the water are in danger. So basically, the changes from RAR to RAPR were just recommendations from the ombudsman. The main change is more training for the QEPs. The second part of that component was uploading reports to the ministry. So before, the ministry wasn't getting all these QEP reports. Misfire of who was getting them. So with this new regulation in RAPR, now when a QEP does a report, it gets filed with the ministry through their own system. And it has to be, that's a, you're ready to move it now. They have to do it. The other part of RAPR was that the ministry can hold or withhold an assessment or a report. But it really has no, you know, it can, it can hold the report that the QEP uploaded. And, and then it can let that local government know that it's holding the report. But it only can provide recommendations to the local government. It can't tell the local government which way it wants, wants you to go if you want to allow that. Can only provide you recommendations. And that's on page four, if you look in the top parts. So the current information that you cannot approve is that things right now. So again, this is a really complicated process and I can see why staff, for any local government, they should with it. Cause I've got about 10 hours of reading into all this stuff, if not longer. So then, this here, the whole idea of the RAPR is to do a report. So say if you're in the repairing area, you want to work in the repairing area. And so what it, its directive is, is that before you can do any development in the repairing area, you have to hire a QEP to do this assessment. And the assessment will determine the SPM, which is the setback. That's what the Repairing RAPR report says. Then in the, when the RAPR came out, part of the recommendations through the ombudsman was, can we get QEPs more trained? They want better tools for the QEPs. Well, guess who became the QEPs? The ministry. And guess who came up with the assessment manual to train the QEPs? The ministry. So, so the ministry is making all of its own, I guess, rules and ranks through the technical assessment manual that a QEP has to follow in order to determine the SPM. So basically what it's saying is, is that even though the regulation says you can build from zero to 30 in a repairing area, as long as you have a QEP recorder completed. And they determine that setback. The technical assessment that the QEP has to use that was developed by the ministry tells them there's no building within the first 15 meters. It's not in the regulation, it's not in the law, it's not a, but in the technical assessment manual that the ministry provides to the QEPs, that's where it states that. So I think that's going to probably challenge through an ombudsman, I guess, inquiry. Or I'm sure they'll probably get challenged in the courts. If you guys, I don't want to keep, well, this is pretty straightforward in here. If you look, the biggest part is the RAPR has to all coincide with the Repairing Areas Protection Act. And also the Repairing Areas Protection Regulation law. And then it also has to see with the DFO regulations of protected fish. The whole end result of the RAPR is to protect fish. That's the end result of it. So if you look on my number two, the Repairing Areas Protection Act, it's the second. This was 2024. So it's pretty new. The first page, under four. The directive under subsection one applies to the local government must. And it gives you what the local government must do in order to figure out if it's a P M. It doesn't say the ministry, it says local government. So those are the practices that, you know, and that's right under the Repairing Areas Protection Act. And if you look at the second page, it's saying that if not, a local government does not approve or allow rest damage commercial or industrial development to proceed in an area, area wholly or partially within all of the prescribed portion of a repairing area, unless the prescribed requirements are met. It's basically to come to a RAPR report. So again, it comes back to mostly local government. Repairing areas and letting the ministry know the QEP reports. The other part I found, which was interesting is there's a, a part in the regulation under. So basically, if an area that has a lot of human disturbance, i.e. lagoon. That's a good example because there's so many houses and pavement and sidewalks. Garages within a repairing area already. It falls under what this regulation states as area of human disturbance. So though that area is totally grandfathered through the RAPR reporting. And the, you know, everything can still be built mitigating this dive without having to do a RAPR report. So that's, I'll get more information for, for example, that through CP. But it basically determines that because there's very little repair and habitat left in that streamside protection. It, it doesn't really fall under a RAPR report before you want to replace or do anything there. And then I think there was one more sheet, just for the Repairing Areas Protection law, give you guys some more reading. When submitting the RAPR assessments, what QEPs have to do. Great question.
Thanks. Counsel, questions? Counselor Bushel, then Counselor Rich.
Through the chair, thank you. Todd, yeah, great information. I, I went through it all yesterday and, and I really thought it was really interesting about the existing areas that have been developed and how that falls under that human disturbance. So that's all new to me. I've, I've never seen that before.
Yeah.
And then the other thing too is the liability. We didn't touch on liability. Liability falls back on the QEP?
Yeah, so basically what happens through the RAPR, the RAPR regs is because the ministry is training the QEPs under their technical assessment manual. It all falls back up to the QEP, but then there's another fallback under what's called undue hardship. So if there was a problem with the report and there was, you wanted to allow building, then it comes back to that, which is about the part. But most of the liability, I guess, all of my bill is back to sign off on the QEP.
Okay, great. Can I ask Nicole or Kelly, maybe? I know Tyson has been really, you know, tied up being new and everything. Is there any, do we know of any, any actually forshore training? Anything that's out there for our staff that can actually, you know, get to date? Cause this is really a gray area. Waterfront development has always been a gray area with, with the province and the feds and, and the municipal act and all that. Is there any training that our staff can get to bring them up current? Cause this is actually a brand new document. This one that was done May, May 14th, 2024. And I just wonder if Kelly or Nicole know of anything.
Do anyone want to take that? Go ahead, Nicole.
I'm not aware of any training. Tyson hasn't mentioned it as part of his building program. Yeah.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Now, that being said, we were on the phone with the province and the repairing areas. I don't know, section of the province. We talked to a lovely lady named Ashley, Ashley Long, and she's extremely helpful and super willing to work with local governments for any kind of support and help. I'm sure she would, I mean, and she'd be happy to come to, to counsel as well. I know we had somebody else come to counsel previously. But anyways, I know that they have, there is five biologists, one supervisor, one unit head, and this senior policy analyst there. And they're willing to provide whatever support that us, that we need from a local government perspective.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, just to finish off, that would be interesting to have them come and, and even if we could do a workshop. Like, you know, I know here it's kind of structured and you can't really, you have a presentation and you can ask a few questions. But if they had a little bit of a workshop, if that, I know that's a, and develop, you know, developers like, you know, Baby Holmes or anybody who can come in and listen to the, listen to the, the province and we could, we could ask questions in a workshop and it'd be kind of cool.
Yeah, the other thing I might mention is like on my development I'm doing in the channel. Cause I wanted to do a section 11, I had to do an environment management plan, which then gets uploaded to front counter. And they get reviewed for, in order to give us a section 11, to do work on the wall box. So then when it came to tearing down the building, those, she says, well, they want a RAPR report. So, you know, that's something I think that we could work on, that it could only be, one report's really needed. The RAPR report and the management enhancement plan are pretty much the same. And so the proponent is paying for two reports, both going to front counter to basically do the same thing and repeat the same items in it. So it, it's, you know, rather than doing two reports of 6,000, it could be one report of 6,000. And the environment management plan is way more detailed than the RAPR report. So it gets more detail both to the staff and the front counter and you know. So I think that's something that should be looked at too, as everybody looks forward.
Thanks. Go ahead, Counselor Rich.
Through the chair. Thanks, Todd, for coming. And I, I mean, honestly, this is like, great to me. There's, it's a whole new language and seriously. But so one, one of my first questions is, QEP, like, what's your timeline? So if you file what you're supposed to, how long does it take you to get a report back and be able to start doing the work you need to do?
Okay, so it depends on what they're asking for. So again, it comes like for a section 11, it'd be a year to two years to three years. There's people on the channel waiting. For stuff like a forshore lease, I'm waiting five years now.
Okay, and we've talked with the council, like before last year, we were talking about maybe getting someone within Sycamore's that could do these for us. So you're saying the training has to go through the minister?
So the permitting goes through Ministry of Force, yeah. Section 11 comes through Ministry of Force. Permitting such like, you know, what a RAPR report is specified through the District of Sycamore through its OCP, I think, could be handled in house and not have to go to councils. So stuff like building permits, demo permits, those type of permits, as long as there's a signed off report, I think that could be handled in house. Depending if the staff wanted to do that, deal with that liability.
But as someone that's been working with the water in town for 40 years, would you recommend that Sycamore's, this would be something we would look at? And that would help development and the folks that work here and, and all that kind of stuff? Is that something Sycamore should be taking on or, or we should just be waiting with the government, with everybody else?
We should be pushing and helping them get their work done because they can't do it.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, thanks, Todd. I mean, oh, this thing's, I'll, I'll just use this. But I know we've had few discussions on it and I, I feel like since I've been on council, we've been talking about repairing areas. It seems like, maybe it'll be the whole four years, repairing areas, it's going to be all of that. But okay, so I have a couple of questions here and I'll, and I brought this up with you before, but I'm just looking at a pamphlet here. And it's created by the ministry and it says if anything's within 30 meters, a municipality must, it doesn't say can, it says must, get a QEP report. But it also says that we have to follow the 30 meter repair and assessment area, which is back from the high watermark. Is that your understanding or?
That's where the confusion lies. So the whole idea for RAPR, if there was just a set stone in the line that says it's 30 meters, we wouldn't need QEPs. Right? Because everybody just stays away 30 meters.
Well, I think.
That's the law.
But I think that's the point. If you're back 30 meters, you wouldn't need to have a QEP.
There's no, there's no QEP, there's no report, there's nothing going to front counter. It's just, it's through.
Just through us, yeah.
Yeah. If you want to go within what RAPR says now, if you want to build within that 30 meters, you have to hire a QEP. A QEP is supposed to do a mythology assessment on the area and determine what that setback is. That's what the regulation of the law states. Their assessment manual says you can't build within 15 meters. That's not what the law states. It's not what the regulation says. So there's an issue there on, and then if you look at the federal law federally. The federal law will let you take the actual fish habitat that we're supposed to protect with the SPM and the repairing area. And they'll let you harm it, move it and compensate it and do all this stuff to it. But the province is saying, no, you gotta keep, like, so, so they don't match. Province's legislation doesn't match with the DFO legislation that you have.
So I can certainly see the confusion here. I guess this is, this is a point of clarity that we're going to have to get and get it right from the provincial government about what we are allowed to do. Because I know my understanding from the beginning on this is if it was in the 30 meter zone, then that had to go to a QEP. It had to go to front counter. But it didn't necessarily mean that the 30 meter was the full setback. They could say, hey, you only have to do 15, not 30, right? And that's what front, front counter determined. But it still had to go to them, right? And I, and I, I think that's still the answer and we could check again. But I don't know if it's within 30 meters because it's a provincial regulation that we have much power to ignore that.
Yeah, so the, the two setbacks are different. There's a 50 meter setback in the lake.
For the SPM.
DFO.
All right, okay.
There's a 30 meter setback on rivers from the top of it. And that's a DFO federal regulation.
Okay.
So the 30 meter setback that the OCP stating on everything is kind of not true. Because if you went back to the supersede, what's supersede to? The federal regulations are going to supersede the provincial regulations all day long. So that's, that's where there's another confusing area.
So maybe if I could, I, as a staff, maybe we, we really need to get some, whether it's in writing or not, absolute clarity around this 30 meter trigger. Because all the, all the stuff that I've read is that if it's within the 30 meter, it's not, it's not an if. It means that we have to, we have to ensure that. But if that's not the case, then that's obviously would be a good from my perspective. But I, I feel like all the direct, all the stuff I've read says is within 30 meters, you have to do this. But maybe we could just find some clarity around that from, and I don't quite know where is it? Whether we have that person come and ask them this, or we actually have a letter that we send and ask for the legal clarity around what we have to do.
So I think that because there's people changing all the time and rules are changing and, and no one is, is quite up to speed. So Kelly is the folks that you were talking to, what was her name?
Her name is Ashley.
And is, do you think that they would be willing to, as Counselor Bushel suggested, come and do a, a workshop, a presentation? Maybe we can sit down and try and figure it out?
Yep.
With staff and?
She seemed very friendly and keen on the phone. So I'm sure we can arrange something where she can, you know, give us a little.
Would?
Repairing areas 101.
Would this be something that we'd want to do in council or would this be something that we'd want to do at SNEES? So, because council meetings are council meetings and that's a delegation, but could?
Well, it's the local government that have, so the province has the rules and then they say local government, this is what you have to do. Right? So SNEES really, you know, even, SNEES is more about on the water, not next to the water, which is what the repairing areas regulations about. It's not the water stuff. It's sat right beside the water. So I think, you know, and we can invite other people. Let me, let me reach out after this. So tomorrow I can reach out to Ashley and I can see what, who there or what, what we could do to provide some guidance and some ways to maybe streamline. And, and she did, we did have a conversation and she did talk about, like, you know, why do, does a QEP need another QEP to approve their work, right? Like an engineer, we have an engineer stamp and then we're like, oh, good to go. So there's this RAPR training course that's done in U V C that is a requirement for anybody is for the province to be okay with that person. And there is a way where we could have an in-house QEP. But then there's a, and that in-house QEP could actually do the QEP assessments for developers, right? And then we would charge them and then they would work with the province or not, depending if it needed or exceeded the different regulations. So there, there are ways to work with the repairing areas to try to streamline it. It's not a simple, quick answer and it's not going to happen overnight. But there will be financial also consequences for it. But there, I think there's an opportunity to potentially work regionally. Like if we could attract some kind of talent to do this type of work, but use them in our, like surrounding municipalities, like Salmon Arms, CSRD, to keep them busy enough full time and provide that service. I don't know. There, there are ways.
So I think I, we should make a motion here that we get. Does she have a company?
Ashley.
To look into some repair and areas.
A workshop or a delegation or a workshop or whatever, however we want to. But we do want to be able to ask some questions and perhaps have, you know, others ask, like Todd, as an example, has been, you know,
Nope, most.
Involved in a long time.
I'm sure they'll be happy to do that.
Okay, so I'll make that motion. Gord will second it. Any more discussion? Gord.
Yeah, just one other thing, sir. Remember we went to SOGA and we, we expressed, this was in this, not sure the year before. We expressed that the QEP or the provincial timelines were really stretched out and were taking a long time. And did we get a reply from U V C M? Could you, could you maybe highlight that or maybe email us all again, just to jog their memories?
Yes, through the chair. So the response was that the, the timeline, which was originally eight months to review, was down to 15 to 30 days.
That was in here.
And that governments could use the meat or beef approach outlined in the RAPR. That was the response we received. It's on our advocacy webpage. But that was the gist of the response.
Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah. And further to that, the, the lady that I spoke to today said that whether they accept the report or not, that they're required to respond within 30 days. If the report is complete, it should be processed then. But she says, sometimes there's, what she referred to as amendment. So more back and forth within, which then makes the process a little bit longer. But they do have five biologists. They used to have two.
Counselor Evans, did you have something? And then Counselor Rich.
I was just going to ask a question. Todd, is it a firm of QE, of QEPs that you're dealing with in Vernon or in Calis right now?
Yeah, in Vernon.
Private, private firm?
And all the QEPs are private.
Yeah.
But they're educated by the ministry, like.
Right.
That course in Victoria.
Right.
It's put on by the ministry.
So we could, you're saying, if I, if I may, you're saying we might be able to get somebody in Sycamore's that's trained and qualified by the ministry that we have here that can help us regionally and help us with their own businesses and stuff.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yes. It's not so clear.
No.
Counselor Rich.
Through the chair. So Todd, with this 15 to 30 days, how's that? Like, have you seen this?
No.
Okay. They didn't say which 15 to 30 days.
And they don't. Section 11, I've had section 11 since for two years. My other one, my permit here has been now 30 days for the development permit. Yeah, that's over 30 years now. So.
So ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kelly, then. That's really.
Yeah, thank you, good chair. And just, just on that note, we asked today, apparently there's a portal where we can go and look and check. So we asked for the information today too. So we'll, we'll follow up to see where yours is at. Yes.
That's good.
Yeah.
Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, I, I think ultimately this would probably come down to us having a little bit more power around it. And having that ability to go, no, we feel good about 15 meters being a setback and given, and having the province probably give some greater leeway in their regulations. I just want to make sure we know what we're advocating for because I think this is something that we should continue to go on about. I think there's continued issues and municipalities that could be able to manage this a little bit better than the province probably has up to this point. There's been layers of difficulties, let's say, probably the nicest word to use. But, you know, going, trying to find a proactive approach to it, I think is, is the key that we would want to focus in on. And if we can have that lady and then clarify what all these actual rules are and what the, the regulations are versus what the legislation says, but basically based on what their, or what the policy says. Cause these are all different things, like what is actually the rules would be really nice to get some clarity around so we go forward.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Our end goal should be the quickest way to the end for the developers.
Yeah, of course.
So I guess, Gord, do you have one more question? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, through the chair. I think the other thing we talked about too was our head lease and Siobhan kind of brought it up. Is, you know, some municipalities, it makes sense because they have a lot of forshore leases. And I think one of the reports I read, Plona's got 280 or something and their head lease seems to be working fine. But where Peachland had one and they gave theirs up, I think Kelly might have mentioned they gave theirs up or one of those. where Peachland had one and they gave theirs up, I think Kelly might have mentioned they gave theirs up or one of those communities.
Or Summerland.
Summerland?
I can't remember which one.
Definitely.
And they don't have that many, but we do have a fair amount of, uh, tenures in our, in our boundaries. And, uh, and like I say, maybe that's, that's the route to go. And then, I, I mean, if you take their, and it's all negotiable. I understand that the, the lease payment to the province is negotiable, but if you could somehow get a payroll out of, uh, you know, enough payroll to be able to keep somebody on staff, that's actually a professional on the forshore. And we wouldn't have this problem, probably.
Yep. Agreed. Any more questions? Yep, call the question, all in favor. And that's Carrie. Thanks, Todd.
Guys, for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay, discussion, zoning bylaw amendment number one zero seven three, twenty twenty four. Small-scale, multi-unit housing. Nicole, do you want to take that away?
Yes. Bringing up the slides. Okay, so, um, this is just a short presentation. Uh, we discussed the small-scale, multi-unit housing at the Planning and Development Committee meeting last week. And so we thought it would be a good idea just to bring, um, all of council up to date. And so, um, at that Planning and Development Committee meeting, we just requested some direction on, um, some of the recommendations that the planning staff has. Uh, and just as a reminder, we've talked about it a bit before, um, maybe I would say give a warning that this is, this is coming. Um, so Bill forty-four required, um, small-scale, multi-unit housing, which is secondary suites and accessory dwelling units, and that's province-wide. And the District of Sycamore's had, um, I guess, single-family residential areas. And so this, um, applies to us. So we have to, uh, amend our bylaws to ensure that we allow secondary suites and accessory dwelling units. The deadline's June thirtieth and we're aiming to hit that, um, but we have some more discussion to come. So with that change, um, a manual was provided to planning staff. And it was, uh, suggested staff reports, changes we could make, things we might want to relax to be able to allow increased, uh, housing density. And so we use this guide to identify some of the proposed changes, um, at the planning committee. So this is a snip right out of that guideline, and this is what applies to Sycamore's. I said that we are quite lucky, um, we have a smaller population, so some of the bigger requirements don't apply to Sycamore's. But what does is again, the secondary suite or, um, accessory dwelling unit. A lot of our, um, bylaw already allows this, but there is some language in there that also restricts it in certain cases. And so, um, we're looking to amend that. Uh, last year in July, twenty twenty-three, the, uh, gentle infill, I don't know if it was a bylaw or O C P amendments was proposed to council. And at that time it was tabled and we've just picked that up and took a look and incorporated anything that we could, uh, for increased density for the secondary dwelling and accessory dwelling units. So at the Planning and Development Committee meeting, we talked about this table and I, I wasn't going to go through it again because we had like a two-hour discussion at the last P D C, maybe a little bit longer. So I encourage you to listen to that recording. Um, it was just initial breakthrough of this is what we were thinking. Uh, so we walked through the table, talked about all of the residential zones and where their, um, I guess provisions were similar setbacks, minimum parcel coverage, um, building height, and then where we could maybe combine some of the existing zones into one and then update our definition. Have it include secondary dwellings and accessory dwelling units. Uh, in that conversation, we had some suggestions increasing the coverage maybe from forty percent to fifty percent. So if we're going to have a single-family dwelling and an accessory dwelling unit, that would, uh, take up a little more space on that, um, parcel. And we didn't want to have to continue to see, uh, variances to the parcel coverage. So that was discussed. Um, the biggest thing that we had proposed was combining R one, R two and R three into one zone. Because right now, they all have very, very similar requirements for setbacks, height, uh, coverage. And, um, so that would be into one new zone. Uh, I think we just called it general residential, which means we'd have a few, uh, zoning renewals, because there wouldn't be more, and of course, some definition changes. Uh, we've since discussed that, um, after the P D C, maybe that's not the best idea. Um, one of those zones is the mobile homes. And maybe that one is just kept separate and then we just combine the R one and R two. So we're still open to any kind of thoughts that the committee has today or, uh, during this process for sure, let us know. And then on the next slide, we just had a snip of the existing zones and had talked about the, uh, additions and then what we're removing and, uh, the tax that we are keeping. So that was a general, I guess, summary of the discussion at the Planning and Development Committee and open to discussion. Oh, I missed a slide, sorry. And then, uh, this, this is just in general, doesn't mean we're going to hit these, uh, dates, but um, we're going to have to advertise that there's no public hearing. It's, uh, prohibited, um, because it has to do with this housing change. And then at some point we need to do first, second, third, and after third and between adoption, we need to get M O T I approval. And then of course, adoption. Um, so that's the requirements for the zoning bylaw. So we will have to do on the side, review of all of our other bylaws, just to ensure that it, um, aligns with the changes that we're proposing. And the O C P needs to be reviewed, um, it's required by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to include, uh, certain housing requirements. So that is also on our radar.
Thanks, Nicole. Counselor Rich? Through the chair, just a quick question. Have we had, um, many people looking for secondary suites or add-ons? I know like this is a huge thing being on the housing committee and, uh, you know, Victoria eliminated parking, that you don't need to have a parking spot for a place. Um, Surrey has had massive issues now because putting up to six units on a lot, but their infrastructure, their, their sewer and water can't keep up. And the mayor of Surrey is actually having a massive meltdown about this. Um, because they don't have the infrastructure and they don't have schools and a lot of other things. So how does that affect Sycamore's and do we have people applying for, for putting in secondary suites and, and are we set up to do that? Like, I mean, I mean, I know our elementary school is full at two hundred and forty kids. So do, do we have sewer for that? Do we have water for it? Do we have, if we take one house and we turn it into six houses, can we manage it?
Good to hear. So right now, um, the District of Sycamore's isn't required to do the six units. We're only required to do the two. And that's what we're proposing is, I would say, bare minimum. We can definitely look at doing four or six. What I would recommend is because we have a tight timeline. If that's what we want to do, we could definitely do it in a later amendment, but just for clarity, we're not proposing, um, six units in our residential zone. Um, and then, uh, and you have a lot of questions. So for, I guess, what I've seen across the desk, it's, yeah, we see a lot of, I would say, secondary suites instead of additional dwelling units. That doesn't mean that they're not coming. I know there's an incentive program available right now from the province that just opened, uh, not too long ago. Uh, and we always let people know about that when they inquire. But yeah, I would say we see a lot more suites, garages turning into suites, basement suites, rather than the additional dwelling unit. Um, and then in terms of sewer, I don't know if you want to chip in, uh, Daryl, but I know at, at least for the developments that we have proposed today, and you'll hear about some tonight, um, there's capacity, but I know there are, um, sewer capac- capacity issues. Yeah.
Yeah, I can speak to that through the chair. Um, you know, if we were to put six units on every lot, obviously we wouldn't be able to handle that. Uh, I guess the, the best numbers that I've seen, the best study that I've seen came through the D C C process. When we were looking at carriage houses and they projected kind of how many they would anticipate in the next few years coming on, and it wasn't concerning at, at that point. So something we have to be mindful, we have to watch and monitor it.
Counsel Bailey?
Um, yeah, I think the most important thing is this is provincially mandated, right? This is, this is stuff that we have to do by the end of, end of, uh, or they'd like us to do by the end of June, if we hopefully reach that. If not, we'll, we'll see what they say in July. But, uh, I, I mean, I think the planning and development staff done a lot of really good work and, and June on that whole um, chart, i- it's quite impressive if you guys have a chance to look at it, but all just our different zonings, but, um, yeah, I was gonna say like, we're not going to put six on, um, it, that's probably a discussion we should have later on about whether we should be allowing four. But I, I don't think we'd ever get to six or at least twelve maybe, but, um, it's definitely some consider, you know, consideration even when you get to four. It was about parking, sewer, water, infrastructure and all these sort of things that I think come into play. But overall, like, what, what I felt looking at this at the Planning and Development Meeting was that it was really well put together, thought out. Staff did a very good job at trying to take what is provincial mandates now, like we, this doesn't even go to a public hearing. Um, this is all part of dealing with the housing crisis, the way the province sees it. So, um, yeah, I think they've done a good job. It's, you know, people can debate whether this is the right approach to planning, but that's largely been taken out of our hands now by, you know, provincial mandates and, you know, we, for, for example, yeah, four twenty-five Main Street, I didn't have to go to a public hearing. If that was a while back, it absolutely would have gone to a public hearing. So there's, there's a whole bunch of different changes that are going to come when it comes to housing. And this is just, I think, one of the first part. I, I expect more too. So anyways, good job, staff. I just want to say that.
Thanks, Counselor. Haley, Counsel from a cave?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, one question was about R one and R two. Just looking at them, I, I don't see any problem with just calling that one when those two together. I don't see any issue with that, in my opinion. You're, you're looking for staff or council input?
Counsel Evans?
Just some anecdotal answer to what Siobhan was asking. Yesterday I had lunch with a thirty-five-year-old dad with several kids and he was glad to be able to come here yesterday and look at the plants just outside this door and the wall. And he wants to build a standalone structure in their yard and he's got an appointment tomorrow here, I think, or something. So he's, he, that's quite encouraging that we're making it easier for people and there's guys like him that can do that, so.
Yeah, um, just, um, just for clarification, I mean, I mean, you can, we, we have zoning that allows you to build a carriage home in your backyard. And, and thanks, staff. This is, this is wonderful. Where I really have a problem wrapping my head around this is how it's being delivered to us. You have bigger issues in adding more houses, um, into, and I know there's a housing shortage. In Sycamore's, we're addressing a lot of that. We've got a lot going on. But there's also population increase crisis. There is also healthcare crisis. There is also, there's a lot of this that needs to be looked at and addressed before we keep taking all this legislation that's being delivered to us and just adopting it and making it ours and moving forward. It's there's no, I don't know, I think, I feel like we're missing a bigger picture, like we're, the parking, the Tennessee Act as an example. Now you've got people living in your backyard. Now public hearings are prohibited. So what if I don't want four people or two houses in the backyard next to me where I'm moved? Like, I'm, I, I feel like we're just flopping down, or the, the province is just flopping in a, an idea. And we are going to have to scramble to figure out is kind of what I'm worried about. Like, I'm, I'm worried about the neighbors. I'm worried about how you get that person out of your house if it doesn't work out. And the parking, which is already a crisis. And healthcare, just so many bigger things that the province is not looking at, but just downloading. So I feel, I'm feeling a little off on this particular legislation. Go ahead, Pam.
I, I agree with you. Um, I think, I think that there, we have to, we're going to end up having to coordinate all this stuff and, and the more we build, the more people we bring in, the more services we, we have to be able to handle, the more healthcare, the more everything. So I hear you. I think that, that really is something to be aware of. So if, if they're more or less downloading it, we are the ones that are going to have to slow things down and really work to to manage it.
For sure, for sure. Counsel Rich? Uh, through the chair, yeah. And I, I completely agree, uh, with you. And that was, I'm all for housing. I'm absolutely for building our community. Um, Nicole, how many do, if, how many are across your desk for secondary suites or, or just a guess of it?
Um, geez, I was just looking at, because I guess this is more, um, they would require a building permit and that's what's crossing our desk. Uh, I thought maybe we had, I don't know, ten to fifteen. That's a total gap. But I'm just thinking we have per active application. I thought we had about forty. No, but that's not just secondary suites. Um, it's additions and things like that. So that's why I guess ten, fifteen of them are going to be suites.
Counsel Bushell?
Yes, through the chair. I, yeah, I agree with, uh, you know, pretty much what everybody says. It's, it's, every community is different. And, uh, you know, this is like, a lot of this is big community stuff. And of course, we have to, we have to abide by it, which doesn't, doesn't make sense. But I think staff have done a good job in, you know, baby steps for you in two units. I mean, the carriage house thing hasn't really taken off like we, we thought, you know, it would really take off, and it hasn't really taken off. So every community is different. And, uh, yeah, I think you did a good job, uh, putting this together, um, Nicole and June. That's really good. Thank you.
Um, Sarah, then Counsel Bailey?
Uh, through the chair. I just wanted to add that there has been interest in the pre-approved secondary dwelling unit designs. And that project, um, creating that pre-approved plan library is on hold as we were waiting to do the open house. There was an online survey that was completed and that's what's outside the doors here. Um, Counselor Evans, those designs, wanting to look, to get those down to six total because the designers have yet to create the construction plan, so we can't provide them to the public until that open house occurs. Um, and we're hoping to kind of piggyback that with the four-two-five housing development, which I assume is occurring fairly soon, that information session. But, but there has been interest in, in those designs and, um, we're just not quite there yet, but it's coming.
Counsel Bailey?
Yeah, I, I certainly take the mayor's point. I mean, there's been a lot of downloading. This one I'm not particularly concerned about because I think us going to two is not going to have a dramatic effect. I think it's going to be a little bit more gentle than what larger municipalities are going to experience. I mean, certainly going from one to six is dramatic and massive. I don't even know how they would have the infrastructure for that. I mean, six units take a lot more power, take a lot more water, take a lot more sewer. I mean, just building the infrastructure around that is going to be a totally different thing than what we'll have here. I think what we're going to see here is probably just a little more gentle. It's going to be basement suites, legal basement suites. I think they probably exist now already. Uh, but, you know, carriage homes, things like that, that I think we can see how this works and then we could take a look at whether we want to go in certain areas to allow four, right? Um, there, there's going to be some areas where we could look at where our infrastructure is at and say, hey, this could probably do with a little bit more density, or this area definitely can't keep it at two. So I, I, I just view it as, I mean, it's a political response from the province, right, on a, on a, on a, on a crisis that's happening here. And, um, but overall, I think it won't be a bad thing for the town to, to gently densify some of these areas. And I think this has been going on a while too. And whether it was legal or not, um, I think people have been pretty solid on the basement suites and secondary suites for quite a while. So, yeah, I, I, I just think, well, we should monitor it though and see how this goes. And I think it'll also probably have a dramatic im- impact on the permits that we're being asked for. So i- it's, this is going to be one of these things that I think we should look at a few times a year. And just see how it's going based on the numbers and everything else. So.
Go ahead, Kelly, then Counsel Bailey.
Yep, so I'll be really quick through the chair. So actually, it was part of our housing strategy to do this gentle infill. And if you recall that back in the day, Sarah brought some, some stuff forward to council, some O C P amendments and zoning bylaws to actually go up to four in residential areas, which we tabled, that's, that's shifted over. But right now, are, are those zones allowed to suites anyway? So actually, it doesn't change, other than tweaking some setbacks and con- consolidating it. We're lucky because our population is for, uh, ten thousand and over or five thousand and over.
Uh, I don't, yeah, it might be going to have to allow.
For shorter mental. Yeah, yeah, exact, getting the two mixed up. But anyway, so it really, other than making us clean up and tidy up, doesn't really affect our community unless we decided to go even more than that in certain areas, if we so choose, which is what this grant, we got a complete communities grant we applied for, which would identify, uh, the areas within our Uh, the areas within our community that actually made sense to increase the density based on. Our infrastructure and, and, and the amenities around it. So that's a long term.
Counselor Bates?
Um, my question is Mark, because I can't remember, uh, the discussion and maybe until we get to like. Plans for carriage houses and for secondary suites. I like the variety of offering people these different options. But I'm wondering, is there actually, and do we know if there's a, like a cheapest of. For, for people looking at it, um, different levels of investment, is there, you know, sort of a cost? To the basement suite versus the carriage house versus it. I mean, I know a townhouse would definitely be more, but just looking at different income levels and, and that kind of stuff. Have we done any of that, or is that like next phase when we, we get plans together?
To construction. Maybe Nicole, do you wanna address?
Through the chair, I think, um.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Rich?
Yeah, yeah, through the chair. We, so the, the Housing Committee has done the, 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 the secondary suite, and that's what we've looked at. We have not done a compare and contrast on, on how, um, we've had Bayview and, and, and other people come in and kind of give us this. Cost per, per square foot and then different types of foundations, but I mean, it depends where you are in the floodplain and there's a lot of different. Um, and cost of building goes up and down, but up and up. So generally, what we've done is just. For a secondary suite, and some of those are attached and some are detached, but not secondary suite versus basement suite versus carriage house. We have not done that study yet, and it may be something that, you know, it's recommended to, um, the Housing Committee and what direction we take.
Sarah, go ahead.
Through the chair, just to add to what Counselor Rich has shared, uh, Sasky did provide some, yes, some financing information and. And in regards to secondary dwelling units, um, just so people have that. When they're looking at, you know, whether it's feasible for them to, to, um, invest in a secondary dwelling and that information. Um, would be included as part of the information package with the pre-approved designs, but also on the website.
So, and as far as I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm all about housing. I think Sicamous has done a brilliant job of, of going forward. I'm about this legislation being pushed down on us and I'm about prohibiting public hearings and. Um, not enough, I don't feel enough thought from the government and I don't feel like they're fixing anything. Above us, like, I don't feel like they're fixing the, our healthcare, but we're adding more people to our population in B C. All the time. So I just feel like we're missing pieces and downloading. Things that we have to, um, as a municipality deal with. So. That's just my opinion on this, so.
Counselor Bailey?
Are we prohibited? Or does it become like doing a public hearing? Are we absolutely barred from doing a public hearing?
Yeah, through the chair, as far as I know, yes. Um, and, and it's more along the lines of not, not that you're gonna, don't consult with the public, it's just. More to streamline it, because if we had to do a public hearing, we'd have to advertise and that would take more time. Just trying to get the changes through as fast as possible and removing that public hearing requirement was part of that decision. Through the chair, and there's, yeah, there's other ways that can be engaged, that, that requirement for the public hearings. If it, if it's for housing, residential housing and aligns with the O C P. So if it doesn't align with the O C P, then you'd still have a public hearing, even if it's for housing.
Okay.
Two bits, yeah.
Thanks.
Any more questions? Okay, let's move on. Twenty twenty-four Union of B C Municipalities Convention Meeting Request, Sarah.
The chair, so the annual U B C M convention is a little ways away. It's September sixteenth to twentieth in Vancouver. Um, however, we are receiving emails from, um, the premier, uh, Ministry of Municipal Affairs about. The meeting request. So we have until June twenty-first to submit meeting requests with the premier. Or the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, um, uh, and. And then until August twenty-first for meetings with staff from the ministries, agencies, kind of future corporations. And so really, I'm just bringing this forward for council, um, to start thinking about. What topics they want to address at U B C M and what meeting requests you want to put forward. Um, so that staff can start preparing. And then in the report, I just note, um, I include Kelly's staff reports from twenty twenty-two. And twenty twenty-three that give a recap of the meetings that were held. So there were ten meetings in twenty twenty-two and nine. And twenty twenty-three, uh, and not all the requests are always, um, accepted, except we did quite well last year. Um, so yeah, it's just here for you to discuss, and then I just have some kind of considerations for you to. Um, within the report, you know, like just thinking about, you know. The strategic priorities, um, is there any projects that we wanna give an update on, uh, to a ministry? Uh, past meetings, so has a topic been discussed previously and does it require further advocacy? Time constraints, so how many meetings you wanna, you know, look at during your time at U B C M, because I know it's quite busy. Um, yeah, and it's really just up for you guys to chat about. We don't need to have any recommendation today. It's just if you know there's a few right off the top of your head that you want us to start preparing for, we can do that.
Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, I wanted to throw something out to council and see, uh, how they felt about. Maybe pushing for a proper left-hand turn lane off of TransCanada onto Highway ninety-seven. When we did our traffic impact study as a fallout from, um, development of five thirty-four. It, it said. No impact or some minor changes to have no impact on Main Street, but. The gold nugget we got out of that traffic analysis or traffic impact study was. TransCanada Highway on the left-hand turn slot is not the current design. It has to have a larger, um. Uh, capacity for the left turn slot. Uh, quite, quite, quite a bit more, actually. And, uh, and that's the main movement for people to get off the highway and into our town. They're already in. In our city limits, I understand, if, if, if they don't turn or turn, but. We want them to get off TransCanada in the town. We wanna make it as easy as possible. We have that traffic impact study that shows. That the left turn slot is not the current, not to their own standards. Could we try and be pushing? That as a project, we, we, in the past, we tried to push four-lane and then, and that's got us nowhere for three turns. My, I've been on three terms, got us nowhere. Um, but now that we have this traffic impact study showing that, that left turn slot is not to the current. Sign and push it as a safety issue, because the ministry always moves on safety issues, push it as a safety issue. Because if there's not enough capacity, you got the back, the, the furthest car on east. Uh, sticking out in, in the true traffic and, and that, that's a safety issue. So we could, I'm, I'm asking council if they're interested in pushing that, it's a safety issue at U B C M to, uh. Try and make that a project, M O T I, to get a proper left-hand turn slot in TransCanada.
Thank you, Counselor Bailey, then Counselor.
Yeah, I mean, this is an election year, so this whole U B C M is gonna be a complete goncho of politics. I mean, I think it's actually in the middle, the beginning of the RIT period, because the election is October the nineteenth, so. I mean, we could go in and do some specific ask, but I think we should be thinking about more macro things, right? Um, you know, and we've taken positions on some of those things that have affected us, certainly drugs and parks and those issues. And thinking maybe a little bit more broader, and I think we should absolutely be asking for meetings with opposition folks and. Uh, maybe John Rustad or, or others, like, we shouldn't just limit ourselves to, um, the government. Because it's, well, not actually technically, whether, you know, there's still a government, but there's an active election gonna be happening right at this time. And I'm, I'm sure U B C M is going to reflect that. Um, and so i- if we. Back up and we kind of take a look at what we've been discussing here for the last couple of years. What are some of those big issues that we would maybe wanna get into the ear of government about? You know, are we wanting to talk about some of these regulations that are being downloaded on us? Um, you know, the riparian areas or things that could empower municipalities to deliver services better. I, I, I just wonder if, you know, in an election year, some of those big issues can be on the table and we could maybe find some. Other support from municipalities to push that as well. Um, I, I, I just think that. With the timing being the way it is, uh, we could certainly talk to ministerial staff. But if the government changes or there's a minority government or, who knows, right? Um, the, all of the stuff that we discuss might actually just change in a month later. But some of the bigger issues that we could push, I think that could be some of our, this could be an opportunity for us, is what I'm saying.
Yep, thank you. Counselor Richardson, Counselor Evans?
Uh, through the chair, I, I mean, I really think we need to talk about the Owlhead Bike Park. I think we need to talk about the back country. We have the folks come through and, uh, talk about all through, you know, those backroads and losing those. Um, and how that's gonna affect us, because that's shoulder season, that's summer, that's our off-road guys and that's our sleds. And I think we have to, you know, with, with, with whatever government we get in. I think that's really important that, you know, we were told, um, September last year that. Owlhead Bike Park is on the, it's on my desk and it's gonna be signed and we're good. And I know that Daryl probably once a week. Checks his email and goes, is there anything under the letter O, under Owlhead? And there's just not. So, um, and as that's now being pulled back and, and we're being told that, um. You know, we may be losing some of these backroads, uh, due to Toco pulling out and closing logging roads. We need to advocate for that. We need to be on the forefront, um, I think.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, yeah, I think we're, I think it's on our radar right now, but absolutely, we need to keep it going. For sure. Counselor Evans?
Yeah, so if, is the proper way to do this, if we get good ideas like Malcolm's and Siobhan's, any of the other days, we write Sarah. And as we're thinking over the next couple of days about the means we'd like, is that what we do?
Sarah, is that what you'd like? Would you like us, would you like us to send you ideas or do you want, do we wanna have a? Do you want us to hash it out right here right now?
Through the chair, it'd be great to have that discussion now. We don't have a lot on this agenda and, uh, I want council consensus as to what. We're preparing, because there's work that goes into preparing for the meetings. Um. So if we can have a good discussion now, that would be great, but we could bring it back to the, we have time, right? So we could bring it back to the June twelve committee of the whole. For further discussion. Um, I was just wondering if there's any right off the bat, like, off the bat that you, like Owlhead, right? Owlhead and back country access, which is, you know, there's a letter going out advocating.
I would, uh, I would definitely support Malcolm on that, because that four-laning is gonna be going on and maybe there's a.
So M L T I.
The time.
I was just gonna.
Sorry.
Like the, maybe instead of that, the TransCanada four-laning period. Yeah, that's, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, um, that's, that's too broad. And we, we have to be very specific and we got the data, we got the information there from the traffic analysis study. Specific to left turn lane that, that they did, they just. And ignore it. And, and you sell that as a safety, safety hazard. And, and Ministry of Transportation says safety is their number one priority, so. I, I think if we're specific in this case, they'll, they'll have, they'll have trouble saying no.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I, I just, yeah, I mean, I have no problem with that. I think it's a good idea. I just think that the ministry is going to be like, well, we're gonna do all that. When we four-lane it. And I think that's probably the answer that we're gonna get, like, our, you know, we know their next plan and we haven't been told what it is yet. Is what happens after the Broome Bridge, or at least I don't think we've been fully told, but whatever, I, I'm, I'm fine with it. I, I just wonder in, in the political environment that we're in, is whether those types of specific asks will get much play.
Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, we have been told for the four-laning, we fold a, a ten-year horizon for the Liberal Government. And a twenty-five-year horizon for the, uh, N D P government. But I think we could fast track this down in two or three years for, uh, the left turn slot turn lane.
So just, Kelly, I guess a quick question for you is, um, is that, that's in our corridor plan that we're. Are we working on the corridor plan? Go ahead.
So through, we actually have a terms of reference that we're working with M O T I, so they've committed to about, is it fifty or a hundred thousand dollars? Yeah, I remember, and we have some money in our budget too, and so we're working. We've been busy, so we're just getting in terms for this community transportation plan, and I believe we've reached out. To the same individual who did that traffic impact study, correct? To, to work with us on a community transportation plan of both the highways running through. And how they're gonna speak to our businesses as well as active transportation. So we're currently working on, like, we have a terms of reference. And we're, we're not quite there yet, but we are working on it right now, behind the scenes, just so everybody's aware.
Counselor Bushel?
Yeah, through the chair, I, I like everybody's idea about, you know, the Q E P, the head lease, the rapper discussion. Um, Crown Land Access for sure. Um, I like, I, Malcolm's idea about the highway. Uh, turning lane, but the other thing you could add to that too is the safety of that walkway, that somehow we could get that in there as well, that walkway. Because, you know, we have, you know, the highway segregates our community. Yeah, for sure. And then the other one was, you know, if you don't ask, you don't get is the, um, the presentation we have. After this is the, the transportation bridge over to the rail trail. You know, you, you can't, if you keep asking, you might get something, but.
And we do have a lot of support on that from, you know, our neighbors and our, you know, our. Yeah, exactly. So, mm-hmm, for sure. Go ahead, Sarah.
Through the chair, and at, uh, Silga, I mean, we, there was an intergovernmental relations, uh, workshop. I'm not sure. I think Counselor Beach was at that one. I think that it's a good opportunity to also share about what. Exciting projects are happening and it could be about the rail trail and the pedestrian bridge and wanting to get that. So there's connection and connecting the community. So it can be asked, but it can also be updates and sharing that, um. I know it's tough, because this is an election year, so you're creating these relationships. Um, but that being said, it's, being said, it's still a good time to do that, so. Um, I'm hearing pedestrian bridge. Brown, uh, and then under environment, so we've got riparian areas. Did not hear aquatic invasive species, but last year we kind of tied those two together.
Yeah. The muscle, yeah.
They just increased the funding for that, so that's, that's kind of on track.
Yeah, it is, it is. We don't, yeah, I don't know if we need to.
There's also that change with the pole-to-plug legislation, that it's illegal now to, um, transport. Um, okay, and then so M O T I, uh, highway, uh, safety. Uh, so looking at safe crossing and then the exchange between Highway one and ninety-seven A Main Street.
Westbound east turn movement, specifically westbound east turn movement off one onto ninety-seven.
Okay.
Putting that scope to pedestrian path.
Okay, and community transportation plan, um, within that, we can.
Headbridge.
Yeah, and pedestrian bridge, yes, and Crown Land, uh, access back country.
Yeah, so we've probably got enough already, but also. We also talked about a pedestrian crossing at the junction of ninety-seven to TransCanada. I don't know if we want, like, cross. I don't know if we, if, if the timing is right, or if they were to four-lane it, then that might be a better time. It would be a larger, a larger crossing. Just, just saying, we actually talked about that, so.
Counselor Rich?
Through the chair, and I, I mean, if we have some spare time and we're hanging out, I would want to meet with, um, Anne Kang again. She's come to our community. She's liked what we've done. She's given us lots of money and I think we come up with some more plans we want for recreation. Daryl, pick some. Um, and, and we say, here's what we're doing, our little community, and. Here's wha- what we want, and I think that's something we really look at. We're on our radar. She liked it here. And I think it's worth going in and, and taking that ten minutes to thank her and also say, and we also want this. So.
She, um, she also is super excited about the rail trail.
Yep.
So it's a legacy project. She wants to see that done. And so maybe that pedestrian bridge could be something that she might be a little bit.
Or our outdoor skating rink that the, um, Eagles have put in, um, for funding. But that would be incredible if we've got that, get that outdoor rink, because we're gonna need to toss money into that too. And that could also be like a lacrosse or roller skating and all kinds of good things if we.
Yes, for sure.
I would love to see that outdoor rink go.
Counselor Bushel?
Yeah, I heard your word, uh, pull the plug. If Daryl doesn't get more, uh, more capacity, he's gonna be pulling the plug. So I think we should meet with the ministry and.
Do it, that's good.
Good segue. We have enough. Counselor Bailey.
Yeah, and um, I just had, was, well, that was definitely one, I think we should be talking about MOE Waste Fire Treatment Plant. Um, I think we should always keep that in mind. I know you're doing work, but that is something that's going to come back and, or we can talk about it and start thinking about who we need to tap for some funding or whatever. But uh, we should also talk, and it kind of goes into the backcountry uses, but the NOI about uses of public assets. Um, we've talked about it at council. You know, about how we're going to have continued access to the water, to the backcountry. I think it's a, it's, it's a timely discussion that a lot of people are having in the province since it came up recently. Um, and the government kind of rolled back on some of their decisions, but that, that could be something we could talk to the government about, but also opposition folks about.
Yeah, which proves our, proves a point that if there is pushback in the government, here's enough, they will go, they will back off a little bit, right? So, I mean, it's not over yet, but it's backed off for now. Go ahead, Kelly.
Um, yeah, and could I suggest, because I know, for example, with Anne, uh, uh, we did get eight, we're using eight million dollars worth of funding from them for the Shooshawke Healing Center. An update on the project, you know, with a couple of fresh photos by the time we go there in September, I think that would be good. And an update, like, you know, for a small municipality, I think uh, to show them what we're doing in terms of housing for those two projects. I mean, I know we're not necessarily asking for anything, but it's also sharing what a small community can do to bring housing. And, you know, you never know what conversations spear other conversations, I don't, just, I, you know, and those are easy fun meetings. Just an idea.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Through the chair, she did say, she was at Silga, and um, Minister Kang did say that she loves to hear about the projects that are occurring with the, the funding, the um, is that, sorry, communities, rolling fund?
Yep, communities, yeah.
Thank you. So, yeah, it's a good time um, for that. So, okay, uh, I've got a good list here.
Yep.
Counselor Bailey has uh, made comment though about min- uh, meetings with opposition. Now, that's something that we wouldn't typically do and we would need to reach out directly. So is that something that council is interested in at this UBCM to meet with opposition on these topics? Or specific topics, maybe something to think about and we could address in June?
Counselor Rich and then Counselor McCabe.
Through the chair, and, and maybe it's a, a dinner row that we, that it's not specifically meeting, but we're like, hey, opposition, here's what we're doing. And, and we have a chat, so again, we're on the radar. But I just, um, with what Kelly was saying, I know with um, Anne, she loved that map that you had, that, she's talked about that map, like, I've read about her talking about that map. And um, uh, I mentioned to Gord and um, the, the other Gord who does the outback. Is if we can bring pictures and, and maps and like, here is our great outdoors and here's a picture of Blue Mountain. And like um, the other Gord, who's, who's the out, out, outdoor guy, um, he's got pictures of like the caribou walking through and grizzlies and everybody like cohabitating and these beautiful things. And I would really like when we walk into these meetings that we're not just walking in like the next guys. Um, that we're walking in uh, with something different. I mean, last year someone had a, they brought apples. I can't even remember who it was. But I do remember everybody getting a basket of apples. So, you know, I, I don't know if that's something our staff can do or something we're interested in doing. But I think it's really important when these guys have ten or fifteen meetings a day, if we can stand out. And I, I know, everybody's always both Siobhan on the bandwagon, but we absolutely need to bring in a pipe band if that's what we're going to do. Because then they will remember us. Um, so I, I would, I would suggest if, if that's something we wanted is that we come into these meetings with something different.
Hey, thanks, Counselor Bailey, then Counselor Evans.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think everybody will be meeting with select people from the opposition. I think we can, they'll, they'll have, like, I mean, if you're talking about the United Caucus, they have everybody. Have a shadow cabinet. I think the hardest part would be trying to reach out to some of the Conservative Party. I mean, they've really shot up in the polls recently. It looks like, if any of those numbers hold, they're going to be electing a lot of people to the House, period. So thi- this, this election's going to be interesting. It didn't look interesting six months ago. It's starting to look a little bit more interesting. But I, I think if we could get a meeting with Rustad, wh- wh- why wouldn't we? And same thing with Kevin Falcon or, or some people around him, right? I'm just, because, and I think just one other thing, I think Sarah, can you actually check? Because I think this actually might be during the RIT period, then if it is.
September twenty-first.
So just, just before, yeah. So then we will still be able to meet with some ministers. But then after that, the government kind of goes into a holding pattern during the election, so, okay.
Counselor Evans.
I like Shafon's idea. I think we should order some really good quality Sycamore chocolates.
We need to, Counselor McCabe.
Taking some moonshine from after.
I'm thinking that's probably a better idea.
And, sorry, I had one, I just added that. You know, it's not a bad idea to take some small blocks of cheese from Deductum Dairy or something. Leave them a small block of cheese or something. Uh, anyhow, um, yeah, I like Bob's idea and, and Shafon's. And I guess the groups, councils, um, the good, the good news stories. So, you know, take artist renderings of our four-twenty-five Main Street project or um, the seniors housing project that we donated land for them to do their four-story building. Or artist rendering of, of pictures in, in construction of our bucking center and, and artist renderings of what it looked like when complete. So government always likes to give money to local governments who can deliver. They don't like giving money and it's sitting there no insults. So we're results-oriented and the good news story shows that we're results-oriented. And uh, yeah, it just keeps good relationships, going for future projects and stuff. As far as, I, I, are we meeting with ministers or ministry staff most of the? Because if we're meeting with ministry staff, they're the same, whether it's NDP or Liberal. We're talking to the same person. Uh, I've experienced that in my, I, three-year, ten-years of, of being council. We've got a Ministry of Transportation, there's Kevin Richter sitting there. Whether it's NDP or whether it's Liberal, there's Kevin Richter sitting there, the Deputy Minister. Um, so governments come and go, but a lot of staff stays the same. They just have different policies they ask their staff to implement. But the staff is, they, they don't, they don't juggle staff too much. So if we're talking to staff, I don't think you have to talk to opposition, because whoever gets in, um, it'll still probably be an all equal, the same staff.
Thanks, Malcolm. Counselor Bushel.
Yeah, just one other thing I didn't, I was going to ask Daryl, was there, was there anything else we missed, Daryl? Or even any of the other staff, is there anything else we missed?
Uh, no, through the chair, I, I think. Uh, and I didn't, I didn't have this in my update for today, but uh, just, I guess, because it came up. We did meet with the province. They came and took a tour of our facility, the Waste Water Treatment Plant. They've looked at some of our. We've got a pre-op meeting scheduled. So, so I think, you know, just from last year's meetings, I think that was kind of a good thing that we got in with them and uh, sounds like they're really willing to work with us. So.
Good. All right, sounds good. Anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing about the staff. Same, it, it really doesn't at the senior level. Uh, when the NDP came in, about eighty percent of the deputy ministers left. They kept about twenty percent. So, all, all I'm, like, don't underestimate, you know, like, an election year to bring about change in senior staff and hedging and talk. I mean, basically, we just want to talk to people about our issues. And, and I think that's, just from my point of view, I think if we're going to be there and they're going to be there also, we should just try to go for some meetings with them. It's a little bit unique. It happens every four years that there's an election. But I think other municipalities will be probably doing the same. But, yeah, it's, it's, uh, staff does change at the senior level, maybe not so much the manager or director level. But anyways, just wanted to make that point.
Hey, thanks.
Hey, yeah, you're good. Through the chair, yeah, just to answer Malcolm's, oh, sorry, Counselor. Um, question about uh, meeting with ministers or staff, either or.
Either.
So, council typically, um, staff has met with staff and then council has met with the elected representative. Uh, but that does have to be the case. Uh, I have a, I have a list though of topics to start with. And I'm, and I heard the, a meeting with Minister Kang, um, Municipal Affairs. Is there interest to request a meeting with the premier again? Okay, and we'll, we'll start working on that.
I got nothing.
Okay. Have a good place to start.
I'm good. I'm good, thanks. Okay, let's carry on. Next, Daryl, you're up. Hey. Tell us.
Hey, so there was, I think, a couple of pages as an attachment, and I, I just thought I would go through these. Uh, we're, we're talking about the Active Transportation Pedestrian Bridge. If you recall back in the high of last year, we had urban systems here. They did their little draft report on the feasibility study they, they'd done for that. Uh, so using the old bridge that crossed was the location. And uh, they gave us some different options in terms of uh, cable state bridges or suspension bridges or an arch bridge. And we had some discussion around that. If you recall, they had a, they had the table up with reds and greens, the positives and the negatives with, with each of those. And stemming from that council meeting, uh, we sent Urban back to focus their, their report, finish the report on the arch-style bridge, mostly because it's out of the water, there's less of an impact. It would probably be the most reasonable one to, to, to get through regulations. Uh, and, and knowing it's going to be the most expensive as well. So they gave us a range of the feasibility report, which you could argue, you know, the range was fourteen to twenty-two million with thirty-five percent contingency. So it's, it's beyond Class D. It's just a number at this point. Uh, we, we did uh, meet some interesting people at the trade show when we went down to UBCM. And we had some discussion with different people there and one happened to be a bridge builder and, you know, not knowing a lot about our situation, they wanted to come up and just take a look around. And so we haven't spent any money with this firm, obviously appropriate to do that, but we, we let them look around. And they took the liberty of drawing a few little renditions for us, what it might look like, like in this location. Uh, so we had some really rudimentary things to look at. And we took that to Slatson staff, so we had a meeting in here and we shared kind of our vision. Um, and wanted some feedback, and so the staff, uh, they were going through a new council at the time. They were going to take this to the new council and it's with them now. Uh, we've, we've had two meetings and um, you know, we're, we're offering through the, the renditions that we're looking at, that everything's flexible. It could be like a landmark bridge, it could be like fingerprints on it, for lack of a better term. Um, because it's, it's early enough, but we want some feedback as to whether they'd be interested in this and what they'd want it to look like. Uh, so we are awaiting feedback on that. They, they did get back to us and say that an AIA would be needed. So archaeology impact assessment, the environmental impact assessment also would need to be done. We, we recognize a geo-assessment would have to be done. So there's some studies that have to happen. Uh, and it kind of takes us to here now. So going forward, feasibility study uh, was done with the preferred structure being the arch. And the environmental overview was part of their feasibility study. It's not complete, but it's kind of a, a basic overview that was done at that time. Uh, Slatson consultation has been initiated. We've reached out for work plans, so we can get an AIA done and an EIA done. So I've got those in green. Uh, we're waiting for the work plan to come back with it. Will be a, a, a budget or an estimate of what that will cost. And so once we have that in hand and some feedback, I want to, I want to make sure we can get into the room with Slatson Council and really hear what they want to, want to see and have their support. Uh, and then with that stakeholder engagement, we could start moving towards a pre-design. And, and then we would, we would need some money to get a pre-design done. And, you know, I, I would be guessing, but it'll be probably in the hundreds of thousands to get that done, the GO and AI, AIA and the EIA. So I'd be guessing, but I would, I would say two to three hundred thousand dollars would probably be what we're looking at to get rolling with those studies and get permitting going. And then we start refining a pre-design and we look for construction funding. And hopefully our partners are on side, we have their support. Uh, and then I would strongly recommend we go to a design builder so that we're not having a prescriptive drawing that we have to make it work in that site. We get a firm that's big enough with engineers on site that if they encounter problems, they engineer, they, they fix it as they go. But we, I mean, that's down the road a little ways, but it's kind of the target we're on.
So Daryl, was there, um, the group that, from the trade show that came out and had a look, was there any um, cost, if it, just a guess or a estimate?
They thought the estimate that was provided by Urban was super conservative. Uh, meaning, you know, it should be a lot less, it should be a lot less.
Okay, so it was excessive, like the Urban.
Urban.
Was really high and they, that they could, yeah, it was really high and they can bring it down somewhat. Okay, well, that makes, okay, well, that's, that's good news.
Yeah.
And were they, when you had that conversation with them, did they know that they had to be as high as the highway bridge?
They did have, they did have some background on what we were looking at and they, yeah, they had all the topography and the shots and some of the.
As long as we keep that in mind, because we've got to get houseboats through there, right? So.
It, it creates a little bit of a challenge on the other side to, to access, but it's all doable. It's all doable.
All right, Counselor Bushel.
Yes, through the chair. Daryl, is, um, is there any way you could utilize any of the highways? Uh, you know, they probably studied that whole channel uh, fairly thorough when they did the arc studies for the highway bridge. And also the, they were talking about doing the second crossing. Is there any possible way we can use any of highways?
If you're looking for the geo-work or?
The arc study?
Arc study.
The arc study?
The arc study, in my experience, is pretty specific to that location. So they're going to hone in on what's your footprint, where are you going to be setting up to do your work, what's going to be impacted? We know there's a fish weir fairly close by. That's, that's the area they'll be really looking at. Whether highways has included any of that, I, I don't think so, but we could look into that.
Counselor McCabe.
Yeah, I like Gord's idea. I, I think the highways did a pretty intensive archaeological impact assessment. Um, I, I think I remember them even doing some underwater LiDAR to properly identify the fish weir. So I think that exists, but, but every time a study like that is done, uh, the local First Nations always like to keep that under wraps and not, not for public consumption, because it can be raided and, you know. People looking for artifacts or whatever sort of thing. Um, but I, I think those studies are done.
Okay.
And with the Ministry of Transportation is, and even to extend the underwater LiDAR for the fish weir. If, if they're willing to share.
We, we have a pretty good relationship with, with caretakers of the land, which does this kind of work for Slatson. So I'll, I'll reach out and ask about that.
And they are, uh, Slatson is uh, supporting this, like they've already, you know, verbally said that they're supporting it.
The staff was, was excited about it. I haven't heard back from the council. So we've sent a couple of follow-ups in the last little bit. I'll send another one and just kind of see where we're at.
Yeah, I think Kupi Christian was um, supporting it as well as a CSRD, so. Um, go ahead, Counselor Bailey, sorry.
Yeah, so the pre-design, um, where would we get that three hundred thousand? Would that be for us to finance that or is there some grants or?
There are grants for those kind of things. It could be a partnership pitch-in and a grant. It could, it, there's no rules. We would have to get creative and.
So then that pre-design would tell us how to go about doing this, the technical challenges and what we would need to do is, is that kind of the idea is, here's that preliminary thing that might work? And then you take that pre-design and then you go to the actual.
Right.
Design stage, so.
The pre-designed, sorry to interrupt, I think the, I think the pre-design, we would take it to a point that we were comfortable with. The pre-designed, sorry to interrupt, I think the, I think the pre-design, we would take it to a point that we were comfortable with. We wouldn't get it to ninety percent or a hundred percent. I think sixty, seventy, somewhere where you could get a design builder that would be comfortable enough. That they could come in and implement the plan.
Any, Counselor McCabe?
I don't see any timelines on here, not, not that brave, eh?
We're just past the second check mark, those next two points, it's kind of where we're at right now.
No, but for timeframe, I mean.
Yeah, timeframes. You know what, I, I want to get some feedback and know that we've got some partners on side. And then we're gonna hear back and have a, a work plan for the A I A, I would expect that in a couple of weeks. The E I A, that should be coming in, we'll, we'll keep pressing and, uh. Once we have those work plans, we'll have a number of how much that's going to cost.
Okay.
See what we've got to figure out and then we can start looking for some pre-design options.
Counselor Bailey.
So we would also, so in, in addition to the pre-design, we would need some money for the. E I A, the E I A and the geo is, as well?
Yeah, the required studies, pre-design, it kind of lumped those together, you might get a grant that would cover that.
So just, is your, is your plan to then to. Gather more information and come back with something a little bit more fulsome in terms of costs and timelines?
Yeah, definitely, we're working on some costs and what the permitting and the studies will cost. I want to come back and say we have support, that I want to sign and that they're, they're in and this is what we want to do.
Awesome.
Good work.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Daryl? I through the Chair, there's going to be a council, a council meeting coming up as well, so that might be a good time to. Talk about the act of transportation. Uh, crossing with Slatgene.
On the agenda.
Yeah, I think we're, we're hoping sometime in June. Um, perhaps July, but. If that's coming.
Good idea. Okay. And then let's move on. Thanks, Daryl. Okay, we're gonna go to council reports and strategic priorities update, let's start with Counselor Evans.
Thank you, madam there.
You both.
Um, I had a good meeting, um, last Wednesday for. Good part of the day with the library and, um. Yeah, all the councillors from all the different towns that, Okanagan Regional Library. And, uh, they're getting a kick out of snort and sneeze, um, and they mentioned it. They're all very supportive of what's going on in Sycamore, and then I, I was at the, uh, interagency meeting yesterday, uh, talking about protecting. Um, partners from intimate violence and, uh, good stuff there as well. Meeting with people like the fellow I met with yesterday, that's, uh. Within a year, he's, he's only been here a year in Sycamore and, and wants to, wants to stay and one of the reasons, one of the ways he's trying to stay is by. Building the carriage house in the back and wants to be here, and he's got four kids and these families are what we want, but. Yeah, I'm encouraged with what's going on in Sycamore.
Awesome. Counselor Rich?
Oh, so I just, uh, I have met with Daryl, I've met with Jake, I've met with Tyler, I've met with Emily. All over recreation and ball fields, huge shout out to Daryl and his crew, um, ball fields look incredible. Uh, so this weekend, there is a ball tourney for the women. Uh, there is sixteen teams coming, which is about, uh, times twenty, gives us three hundred and twenty people and say they all bring someone, oh. Am I lying?
That's this weekend?
But yeah, we're gonna have probably close to five hundred people in Sycamore, so, uh, huge. Um, want to put a shout out to our under eleven ball team that went to Kamloops and cleaned up for the first time. Sycamore came home with gold, uh, first time in probably about fifteen, eighteen years, they've beat everybody. So just. Amazing, um, want to put a shout out to Deb on the twenty-fourth, uh, Friday, four to seven, we have the Morel mushroom. And I think we've got thirty vendors. Over thirty vendors, so that would be absolutely incredible if everybody in our community could get out and just go and see what's going on. Um, Wednesday, we have nine grads from Sycamore, which will be at Splatzine, so those are our indigenous students. And that's Wednesday night in Enderby and that will be our indigenous grad. Um, so again, if anybody has free time and wants to watch our indigenous kids grad. They have their own special graduation for all of our area that happens in Enderby. And then June seventh is our Sycamore grad and we've got over, um. Thirty kids graduating here and again, if anybody has time to turn out and celebrate our kids, uh. That would be incredible, so that's it by me, thank you.
Counselor Bushell.
Yes, to the Chair, uh, I've been out of town, so I've been, been real busy in town. I had, had a fair amount of, uh, a couple more, uh, new developers inquire about some properties in town that I. Talked to, um, I, uh, went through the, we had the planning committee meeting last week, which was very informative. Um, staffer doing a great job there. Um, what else, I did meet with Jake and, and, uh, Siobhan and the crew. In regards to, I think we're supposed to be doing some tests or suck on lights or something. Are we supposed to be doing that tonight?
I believe so.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I, we'll, we'll, we'll hear, they'll call when they need us and, uh, yeah, just been busy, I guess that's about all.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor McCabe.
Yeah, not, not much to report, I've been out of town for five, six days and, uh, yeah, no, um. That's about it for me.
Thanks, Counsel speech.
Yeah, it's been a, a busy few weeks, um, I've, since April and, April and May. Did a couple of, um, education sessions with Siobhan. Um, the first one was online predator danger and, um, and cyberbullying. And that was in April and then the la, the second was, uh, May fifteenth was substitute, so. With youth, children and so both were pretty, uh, informative. Um, and I think raises, raises for us, uh, more awareness of the kinds of. Issues that our youth and young families are happy to deal with here. Um, some of the stuff coming, um, with the substance use was particularly, um. Interesting, uh, we, we had, we didn't have, um, an I H, uh, person there. They were supposed to be, but had some technical problems with Zoom, so I didn't have any input, but. Um, I was able to share the, some of the, a summary of what was brought to us by the. The principal at the high school and, uh, the sort of longtime, um, health and wellness counselor. About the changes since the legalization of. Uh, of pot, uh, the changes they've seen in schools and families. Um, and it, it was pretty impressive, it was pretty. Mind-blowing actually, and I had a chance to share that with, uh, someone at a sort of medium level. Uh, of interior health and, uh, it was quite interesting that their statistics. That they get, he was totally shocked, he said that the statistics that we get do not indicate. That youth are using in schools or that, that the legalization of, of pot impacted in any way on. On the youth, so it tells me that we've got some, we've got some work to do. Like he totally, he should have known, he was in charge of. He was a regional director in charge of support, supporting interior health counselors who are working with youth. And he said his statistics did not indicate that there were any problems in the schools with substance use. And so that was a bit of an eye-opener, um, so that's why we do these things, right? That's why we pull all of these people together from higher up regionally and all around us to sort of. Get a feel for what is actually happening in our communities and how safe and healthy are our families in our communities, so. I'd have to say that it was well worth the effort to do the educations. Um, and we'll keep doing more of them because some of the people just couldn't participate this time, but. I think everybody needs to be able to share their experience. So that was really good and then I'm just in the process of taking in, um. Well, I, I attended the first, um, snow, uh, uh, the rail trail roundtable meeting on the thirteenth. And that, that was very interesting, it was just the first one, we all got introduced and, and, um. Shared a little bit and then I'm also this week attending the teaching at rural. Conference, um, I didn't go this morning, but I spent the afternoon yesterday and I will spend the full morning tomorrow. And, um, it was really interesting because the stuff that we're doing and we're dealing with. Was talked about in that, in not, not us specifically, but directly related to the kind of things that. That we are, they were talking about economic development, well, you know, use your, your outdoor recreation. To increase world ec- economic development, I'm thinking, okay, that's like the rail trail, we're, we're doing that, you know, like. So it was, it was great to be reinforced that the stuff that. That they're talking about, we should be doing, we're already, we're already there and doing it and I found the same. Too, when they're talking about more of the, um. Making a community that is more supportive of its people, of its populations. Talking about, um, sustainability centers and. And centers for heating and cooling that can adjust to climate, you know, change and, um. And talking about sort of working as a whole community partnering to coordinate. Emergency responses, because of course, emergency response is like a huge thing now with wildfires and, and, and. That kind of thing and, and we're also doing that, so. I mean, I think we're all partnering to, to coordinate and, and have that kind of a. Um, wraparound type of response and, and support as well, so it was, it was, it was really interesting. Then the next piece, um, the, the late afternoon piece was on water management. Blood management and prevention and how. How to, um, you know, how people, communities get into trouble in river valleys when they try to. Um, they try to contain water, we need to, we need to let water move, they said. You don't put a little child in a room and shut the door and expect it not to be a disaster. You have to give water room to move, so it was really interesting and I, I'm sad I missed this morning, but tomorrow. I'll have another. Shot, thanks.
Well, mine's odd.
You do, before you do.
Yeah.
Um, I just have to ask one question and that was to do with Sergeant, or, um, Constable Lana, uh, McNeil's presentation to the seniors. Did you get any feedback from that, the telephone scams and the?
No, I.
Feedback on that present?
I heard it was very good, but I didn't get any feedback, yeah.
I just wondered.
I mean, there's all the scams.
I know, I know, but I, just helpful, like if there were.
That's not the first one they've done either, I don't.
I don't know. Counselor Bailey.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
No, no, that's all right, sorry, it was a really good report, Pam, oh, it was great. Um, planning and development, lots of, um, actually, we spent about a good three hours there, I think that was our longest meeting. Last Wednesday, but lots of good stuff coming there, uh, towards council, so planning staff and working very hard and, uh. Few, few hiccups that we're still working on on R V P four and Silver Sands and some interesting issues there. I also attended the, uh, Chamber Commerce A G M, they got some new board members. Also, Mike Milmore, uh, Milmore was there and he actually helped with a small technical problem, so he's already a huge benefit to the community. And Ri- Riversong, I, I think is, uh, he's, he's in a, he's, uh, he's, uh, coming into the community really strongly, so it's nice to see him there. But they have, uh, three new board members and a couple of people retiring from the chamber, but, uh, really good turnout for them as well. Um, met with the A T V club, a lot of the issues we're talking about today, about, um. Some of the forest service roads being decommissioned, I found it to be. Shocking that they call it decommissioning because it's almost like they're booby trapping it. And, uh, the more I kind of learn about that issue, the more it actually really does concern me. Because decommissioning is, is really, doesn't do it justice, they're building a trench in the middle of the road. That could seriously harm people if you went into it, so, uh, I think that was an education that this. Fairly innocuous word, decommissioning, actually means we're making trails unsafe. And that could seriously harm people, so, uh, I thank them for educating me a little bit on that as well and, um. Yeah, that's about it.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, Mike from Riversong is doing, he's.
Yeah, great.
Posts the other day that, uh, he has a, a new guitar dealer, um, and I can't remember the location, not within Canada. But, um, because they're being manufactured here in Sycamore now. And we'll learn more about Mike, but, uh, he sent me a post and he was like, hey, thanks for being a dealer, shout out from Sycamore's British Columbia, you know, where they're being met, so. It's, it's awesome to have another manufacturer, so, Hospital Capital and Guitar Capital, Canada, maybe, hey? Maybe there's a swing there, um, Siobhan and Pam, thank you for, uh, uh, the education piece of, of, um. The, you know, the, the, the community, pulling all of that together and bringing the community together to educate them, I really appreciate that. Um, Counselor Bailey will be speaking to the graduates on May the seventh, thank you, Counselor Bailey, so there will be representation. And, uh, and I'm sure he's gonna do a, a great job, I have been, uh. Um, where is the location for the, uh, mushroom or for the Morel, what's the location of? It's at the Legion?
Four to seven.
Or, and what was the date again?
I'm sorry, May twenty-fourth, this Friday.
Thank you, um, I was on the, uh, at the C S R D meeting in Golden, um. Last Thursday and I don't know if any of you have been to the suspension bridge there. It is simply amazing. And it was started by two kids. So the story around the suspension bridge and how they got their money and their funding and how it came to be is. Is amazing, it's an amazing story, so if you get the opportunity to get there and, and learn about, uh, how it all came to be. It's, uh, it's a really good story, it's a great place to pop in and see. Um, nothing earth-shattering at the, uh, C S R D, uh, meeting, we had some motions pass that came from G A C. And, um, uh, we're moved forward, I had, um, a meeting with. Um, Carly and Morgan, uh, from, um, tourism with the representative from, uh, Toda yesterday over at Old Town Bay. Which was, um, really good because he had never been in a houseboat, I mean, you know, he's not that far away from us. But didn't understand everything that Sycamore's had to offer and Carly and Morgan did a great job of, of, uh. Representing us and, and sharing with him. Um, some of our, some of our shiny, uh, uh, spots. Uh, next week I'm off to F C M with Kelly and Bob, so that's, is that next week?
Two weeks.
That's two weeks away. Okay, good, next week I'll be here. Um, and, uh. Yeah, that was about, that's about it for me as well, so, thanks, anyone in the gallery? Deb, go ahead.
Thanks, I wanted to update you guys on, so, um, all of the art boards are up now except for one and it's very important, but. We're on that and the basket, hanging baskets on, that's everything and, uh, Daryl's staff did most of the fun. So, a long weekend, it was looking pretty good, um, I was playing pickleball at the weekend and there was over thirty people. Playing each morning, you know, like it's getting used, so, some good news there. Um, I noticed the banner theories, put up a really nice bi-lu banner underneath the mainstream landing sign. Yeah, that's a surprise, so thanks to you guys. Um, on the, uh, the Morel market, so it's this Friday, May twenty-fourth, four, seven P M at the Legion. It's obviously a lot more than Morels, but we're going to have a lot of Morels and mushroom experts there and such. We won't have another market until July fifth, I've got over thirty vendors and a really interesting, diverse group. They're not going to come back if we don't get people out, so there's a lot of things to bring people out. You know, we've got kids activities, we've got music, we've got all sorts of things going on, so it can be a really good. Affordable family night out as well as seeing a lot of interesting things. I know people can't always make it, but if you can't make it, tell your frequent friends about it because we've got to get people out. Or, you know, like I say, it, it was honestly quite a complicated effort to get all these guys out, but. They, they'll come as long as people come out, they will come as fast as that, so.
Good. Excellent. Thanks, Deb, anyone online? No? We're good?
Nope.
Okay, well, let's adjourn the uh, Committee of the Home meeting at two fifty on um, the twenty-second. Do I have a mover? Counselor Bailey, Counselor Evans, all in a favor? Man, we are adjourned. Thank you.